I'd like to call this meeting the Westland City Council Order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Melissa Sampe.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk Rolco.
Councilman Gabbout.
President.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Pro temp Lyndell.
President.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
A quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. We'll begin with initially what we wanted to do is take a moment to recognize Judy McKinney, who is a former active member of our community who recently passed away on March 22nd. Thank you. She's been around a long time. A lot of you know Judy. She's been positive, sometimes a little colorful at times, but nonetheless, she was a strong member of our community and always active. And I wanted to take this time to ask my colleagues, the administration, and all our members here in the audience to go ahead and join me in a moment of silence to remember Ms. Judy McKinney. Thank you. May she rest well. We'll begin with special presentations and announcements. First, we have our facilities director Vic Barra.
Greetings, Presidents, Council, and other dignitaries. Today, I joined a virtual meeting with Mayor Wild, our DPS Director Ramsey Elgrebe, and Barbara Reichwaller from DTE, who is the Governmental Affairs Liaison for DTE. And they gave us an update regarding the tree trimming process and the infrastructure improvements that they plan on making here in the near future. In 2021, Westland Neighborhoods experienced electrical power outages primarily due to tree-related damage caused by the high winds experienced during the back-to-back-to-back storms that hit Michigan last summer. According to DTE Power Outage Reporting Data, this amounted to 70% of the outages experienced by our residents and businesses. DTE is focused improvement efforts on the hardest-hit areas. Next slide, please. Reliability work is planned for 25 of the 37 electrical circuits in Westland. Blue areas in the map you see on the screen show the areas served by circuits that are currently improving, and are areas in green are representing areas that tree trimming and equipment upgrades were completed since 2021 to the current date. Slide three, please. Okay. A lot of you are familiar with this slide. It was put out on our social media and on our webpage. This was released to us about two weeks ago from DTE. And you'll notice that some of the areas that are shaded on this map don't directly align with some of the areas that you saw on the previous slide. That is basically, this is their goal for 2022 to get completed, but the areas you saw in blue on the previous slide are areas that are presently scheduled within their framework. So, of course, all of this is going to be timed and weather permitted, but this is DTE's goal for this season, to get all of those trees trimmed in the areas that you see on this slide. The update we received for today, trimmed 60 miles of trees along power lines in Westland in 2021. They trimmed 14 miles of trees along power lines in Westland so far in 2022. The goal is to trim 173 miles of lines in 2022. On average, DTE customers have seen reliability improved by 67% in areas where enhanced tree trimming has been complete. System improvements, complete infrastructure upgrades on nine circuits was served nearly 13,400 customers. And if you reference back to the slide, we don't have to go there, Craig, but if you reference back to the slide with blue and green, you'll notice that a lot of these service areas overlap other communities. So, power supply is not necessarily city-specific by city boundaries. So, we could have a service area go out here in Westland that also affects Garden City, Romulus to the south, and other communities and the like, because they don't stick to the city maps like we do. More system improvement work will start in the second quarter of 2022. This will affect 7,000 customers on four circuits and is expected to be completed by July or June 1st of 2022. Improvements include installing new poles and crossarms, placing animal guards on equipment where our little squirrels get up there and like to chew, and installing specialized equipment that can automatically restore service or isolate damage leading to further restorations. So, with that, I'll be concluding my presentation. I'm going to forward counsel this slide package as well as some of my talking points so that you can reference it in the future, should residents ask you any questions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vic. Up next, we have a legislative update from State Representative Kevin Coleman.
Well, thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Council, Mayor, Administration. I appreciate you having me here tonight to take a quick moment to let you know about some significant developments that have happened in Lansing the last few weeks. And I'm also very encouraged to hear that the city's been talking to DTE. Based on the slide that we saw there, they're going to triple their tree trimming from 2021 to 2022. Our office gets a ton of calls on it. I'm sure you guys do too here at the city. So, I'm just encouraged to see that DTE is taking this seriously. But I wanted to let you know that on March 30th, Governor Whitmer signed the Building Michigan Together Plan. It's a $4.8 billion supplemental appropriating budget, and it appropriates the federal dollars for infrastructure. $1.3 billion of it is for water, and it's from the American Rescue Plan Act. $750 million of that is for drinking water infrastructure, and that includes lead line replacement. And we know that we've talked about lead lines here in Westland, and the city of Wayne has had some issues recently with some of their homes testing over the federal action level. So, we're working with Wayne to try to figure out how we can allocate some money out of this budget to look at those lead lines and hopefully get them out of the ground. So, a lot of this money from the ARP, American Rescue Plan, the state was sitting on that for quite a while now. The majority party in Lansing and the governor had failed for the last several months to come to agreement on that, but I was really pleased that we were able to work that out and get this money appropriated. It's been appropriated, but it hasn't been allocated yet. So, I'm working really hard, talking to our appropriation colleagues up in Lansing about how we can get this money to come back home in the way that we can put it to good use. So, I'll be updating counsel hopefully later in the year, pretty soon here, hopefully, about some more money coming our way. But I'll continue and just give you a few details here of what's in the bill. It's another $120 million for homeowner assistance, the Homeowner Assistance Fund, and it's to assist families staying in their homes, homes who have experienced financial difficulties since January 1st, 2020. $50 million for affordable housing. $250 million to expand broadband internet, and that's the governor's Michigan High-Speed Internet Office. And I'm actually the sponsor of the bill to get that put into statute. So, I've been working closely on that issue. And really, that is to make sure that broadband access is expanded out to underserved and unserved areas, and then also to areas like ours where affordability might be an issue. So, excited to see that process and that office get opened up here and get going, because there's going to be a whole lot of money coming from the federal government to fund broadband internet that was passed last year. And we want to make sure that it's being used efficiently and wisely. There's another $644 million for transportation, and that includes $237 million for state roads and bridges, and then $80 million for local roads. And we know $80 million is not, it's just a drop in the bucket for local roads. I actually penned a letter that we sent to the Appropriations Committee, and I had quite a few of my colleagues sign onto that letter. And we asked them to prioritize local road funding, because if you drive around, you know how cities are having a hard time getting their roads fixed. And it's not just the cities, it's the counties and the state roads as well. But we know the roads were especially bad this year. So, I just want to let you know that I'm working very hard to try to get some more money for our local roads here, because I myself blew out a tire a couple of weeks ago, and I know probably some of the people watching this have hit some pretty bad potholes. So, it's, to me, it's a safety issue, and we need to get these roads fixed. Just to kind of wrap this up, there's another $528 million for treasury, and that includes $46 million for local governments, and that's to hold local governments harmless from negative adjustments as a result of the delayed 2020 census. There's $322 million to local governments for use for local fiscal recovery grants. And I've sent some of that information to the mayor and the administration, and we'll be taking a look at how to get some of that money here in Westland. And then, you may have seen in the media that the Michigan Catastrophic Claims Association is going to distribute $3 billion of its $5 billion surplus to Michigan's, from Michigan's insurance companies, to drivers, because they're sitting on a whole lot of money there. And the way that that's going to be sent to you is via a $400 credit from your insurance company. Your insurance company should be sending you $400 for vehicles that you drove, that you had insured since 2021. But not everybody's seeing that yet. I know some companies have dispersed it, some haven't. But that's $400 per vehicle, so you should be seeing that. And then, I'll just wrap it up and let you know that we're working on a whole lot of things for you. I don't want to take up more of your time tonight, but I'm always happy to go into more detail with folks that want to give me a call. My cellphone number is 734-751-6321. Our office number, if you need any help with any issues like unemployment, veterans' issues, or any state government issues, our office line is 517-373-2576. Our email at our office is kevincoleman@house.mi.gov. And then, we're also having a coffee hour, and that's a week from today, so this upcoming Monday, April 11th, 9:00 a.m. at the Westland Public Library. And we'll go into a lot more detail about what we're working on there. So, appreciate your time and have a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rep. All right. We'll move to questions or input on the agenda. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked will be answered during the item following a motion support from council. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? Sir?
Arthur Warren, citizen of Westland, on the new business, the Adoption Prepared Resolution demanding that impacted Great Lakes Water Authority members, communities not be responsible for the city of Highland Park's water debt. I hope that all the council members will support this, because I'm pretty sure you wouldn't want me to put my water bill in your mailbox and ask you to pay for it. And if you did pay for it, you would start a precedent that other communities would come and say, "We can't pay our bill, and you need to pay it." And also, it's the first time I've ever heard Steve Smith demand that we not pay anything, because every time I go to his office, he's always looking for money. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this on the agenda, ma'am?
Oh, it is not.
It is not.
That part's going to come up in a little bit, and I know you're interested, so I'll call on you right away. Okay?
Thank you.
You got it. All right. Is there any other discussion on the agenda to the entire public? All right. We'll close input on the agenda, move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman McDermott, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting, the study session, and the closed study session, all held March 21, 2022. Approval of minutes of study session held March 24, 2022. Approval of minutes of study session held March 28, 2022. Approval of renewal of annual workforce management subscription with Tyler Technologies Incorporated. The term is for a one-year period in an amount not to exceed $14,157.02. Approval of renewal of 415 Microsoft Exchange G1 licenses for the use of Microsoft Online for email services. The term is one year, amount not to exceed $18,874.20. Adoption of land division resolution, two parcels, west side of Inxter, north of Ann Arbor Trail. This was planning department number 2256, and the land division was approved by city council on March 7, 2022. Adoption of land division resolution, two parcels, west of Newburgh on the north side of Cherry Hill. This was planning department number 1933A. This land division was approved by city council on March 7, 2022. Approval of request from Westland Wayne Relay for Life to waive the administrative fee for use of the Westland Farmers Market, Lyons Pavilion, and Park Pavilion at Central City Tatten Park on June 11 and June 12, 2022 to hold their annual Relay for Life event. The fee of $1,815 will be waived for this event. Last item approved on the consent calendar today, adoption of amended policies and procedures for the Westland City Council. Moving to new business. Item one, adoption of prepared resolution demanding impacted Great Lakes Water Authority member communities not be responsible for the city of Highland Park's GWL, I'm sorry, GLWA debt.
Motion by pro temp Landau, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President.
Hold on, Mayor. There we are.
Thank you, Council President. So, City Council, what we have before you tonight is a resolution. I know that each of you have been following this situation as the administration has as well. Stepping back when the Westland received our water rates, we received notification that there would be a portion of our rates would be attributed to the outstanding debt from Highland Park that was being spread throughout the authority. So, when this first came about, the Conference of Western Wayne, which is, Westland's a part of the 18 communities in Western Wayne County, the leadership there reached out to all of us as we were starting to talk to each other, like, "Hey, did you guys know about this? Did you hear about this?" And so, we tried to work regionally on issues like this. And the Conference of Western Wayne put together a resolution that, what you have here tonight is basically, we're asking our city council, and the Conference of Western Wayne has asked all 18 communities for their city councils to pass resolutions, basically supporting the resolution from the council of Western Wayne. So, that's what we have here tonight. It appears to this point that over $200,000 of the Highland Park debt has been paid by the city of Westland. So, we're, part of this resolution asks that the communities be made whole for the money that was, you know, allocated to us without us knowing about it. And the other part is asking the communities that moving forward to withhold that portion of our monthly payment. And we get a monthly invoice from the Great Lakes Water Authority, and it's not itemized. We get, Steve can tell you, because I checked, we get the bill that says we owe...
$600,000?
$600,000, and very little detail. So, but as you've seen, this has got a lot of attention. And I think that that was, in my humble opinion, is what the Great Lakes Water Authority was hoping that would happen. So, there's been a lot of pressure. There's been a lot of grandstanding, you know, across the counties. And after the Conference of Western Wayne passed a resolution, Macomb County jumped onto it, and the Water Commissioner, Candace Miller, and the county executive, Mark Hackel, had a 45-minute press conference, and they shared their concern with it as well. Since then, it's got a lot of news coverage in the Detroit media. Most recently, the Conference of Western Wayne's colleagues in the Down River community, they've also passed a similar resolution. And all across the area tonight and tomorrow night, city councils are going to be adopting resolutions like this. So, what we're asking for is the state to come to the board, and this is a problem that was created outside of the, outside of the city of Westland and the other members there. So, we're asking the state to come to the table and address this. And I'm hoping that they will, and I think that they will.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Pro temp?
Briefly, I think I know the answer to it, but I'm going to ask anyone.
Hold on. There you go.
I think I know the answer to the question, but I'm going to ask anyway. Did all 18 member communities vote in support of this?
They did. It was unanimous.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item two, approval of voucher.
Motion by Councilman Gabbout, supported by Councilwoman Sampe. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. The clock will not be stopped once it is started. And I already know my first person, so I'm going to call on her right now. Ma'am?
Sorry about that.
No worries.
My name is Veda Atkins. I reside at 33713 Fernwood. I have been there 51 years since September, which will speak a little bit about my age. So, in a week, I have had cops calling me four times, nine-on-one four times. I have a new resident at 33720. So, when I moved there, streets were not paved. Since then, years ago, they were paved. They left all the mailboxes on the streets of, west of Schuman. They didn't move the mailboxes to one side like they did a lot of the streets. I'm sorry, this is how I express myself. But she has called. She's lived there since September. We get along great. Even the older neighbors that have moved on, never had an issue. Now, at my age and finally getting the cops called on me, parked my car there, I did, because someone was in my driveway. And the first time she left me a note, I gave her a note back. I said, "You know, I've lived here a long time, and we all get along with each other, like Randy across the street. He'll say, 'Lee, I'm going to park here, or if you need to park here, just let me know. I'll get my mail.'" But this is what I have faced. Then she called her boyfriend over, and I'm trying to talk to him, and he's walking around. "You're disrespectful. You're disrespectful. You're not..." And I, at this age and stage in life, I don't need this. The cops do not have time to come. And they were all very nice, and they asked me if I'd move my car, and I did. They've got better things to do than come and check on Veda Atkins. But they're doing their job to appease her. I understand that. What I'm asking, and I'll get to the bottom line, I want the mail, all the mailboxes moved on one side like the other streets. I know that's a lot to ask.
To avoid the problem, is what she'll say.
Pardon me? To avoid the problem.
Okay, ma'am. I know. Mayor, do you have, do you want to chime in now? Because you're going to use your time, although I know until her time's done.
Would you like me to respond real quick?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
If he responds right now, he uses your time. Your clock's going. Or he can talk to you after the meeting. It's up to you.
No, that's, that was my, what I had to say.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right, Mayor.
Good evening, and I'm sorry. Well, first of all, thank you for living here for 51 years. The city just turned 55, so you've almost been here since the beginning. So, we appreciate that. I'll talk with the police chief about the issues there. We had moved the, we have recently moved stop signs, or mailboxes on some other streets, just because it turns out they've been on the wrong side all along. So, we do have the mechanism to do that. So, we'll take a look at it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. We do have what?
We do have a mechanism to do that. I'll have to talk with the police chief about that. But we have recently moved some, we've done it on another...
Our time's up.
That's all I asked. That's all I asked.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
She also put, I know, I have no more time.
You're going over. You're going to get me in trouble now.
Okay. No parking, so.
Yep. Well, stick around after the meeting, and we'll talk to you some more, okay?
Well, I will.
Ms. Atkins? All right. Thank you. Yeah. Chief? Hold on. Let me get to the audio screen, chief. There you are.
Okay. Thank you. Through the chair. Just in case you can't stay throughout the whole meeting, I was going to point out that our community police officers are here. We have Officer Bristol and Officer Keller here. They'd be happy to step out in the hallway and talk to you about the problem. And we'll, like the mayor said, we'll certainly take a look at that and work with that on you. But the officers are here. In case you don't have the ability to stay, they could certainly step out there and talk to you right now about it.
Now, would you do that?
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Ray? Ray?
I'm wearing my hat today. Well, this is what a week, two weeks ago. Well, anyway, first of all, I wanna say something positive first. I want to thank the City of Westland for, and Peter and I did a video for the Disabilities Awareness Month, and you don't know how many numbers that went up to now, just checked, 139. Really impressed with that. Don't just use it, because during the year, use it all the time, because it's like, it's awareness, it's a refresher. And sometimes, we make assumptions of people, and we should never do that. So, that's, that's important to me, that everybody, sometimes you don't know who's walking down the street, and oh, that person should never do that, that's not cool at all. Everybody is welcome, even Autism Month, wearing the blue and even got a pin on. And also, I wanna talk about 30 years with Judy. Never will forget about her, and I wanna thank the mayor for letting me know, and Peter for letting me know. I really appreciate that, because I was concerned with our Disability Concern Board, she's on there too, and she will never, will be forgotten, definitely not. She was a strong woman, she advocated for me, and she stood up for me, and I can stand up for myself, too. And it's good to have friends out there that really took a stand and really believe in her passion was here, the councils, the stuff that went on here in Westland, believe me. Day after day, she's like, Ray, I ain't gonna let somebody, let, put you around. And I said, well, thank you. Well, with our Disability Concern Board, for, I just wanna give an example, like, she stood up for me. You don't have to live in the City of Westland to be on the Disability Concern Board. So, we did a lot of changes on that. So, right now, we do have two openings on it, with the disability, if someone has a disability in the family, or the person with a disability, would like to, you can check the website out, and fill out an application. If you have any questions about that, you can contact me as a chair, it's 734-722-4725. I'm looking for two good people with positive attitudes, and move this Westland forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody on my left? Anyone else on my right? All right, we'll close the citizen comments and move to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you once again. Council, thank you for recognizing our Disabilities Committee, Representative Ms. McKinney on her passing, and I was thinking about her, that over the last couple decades, I mean, other than perhaps Councilman Godbout, myself, and maybe Deputy Mayor, well, Deputy Mayor Reddy, or even Richard LeBlanc, I don't know, anybody that has attended as many city council meetings as Ms. McKinney. So, she, she, up until the pandemic, she didn't miss very many meetings for several decades in a row, so she's definitely gonna be missed. Council, on April 1st, I presented our 2022-23 budget to the city council per the charter regulation, that the mayor present the council a budget by April 1st. It's a $72 million balance budget, and it protects our almost $7 million fund balance. Council, this time, what's a little bit different is I've also asked you to consider the adoption of a three-year budget, which would include the budget years 23, 24, and 24, 25. This is a best practice, definitely in local government. This is something that we've been trying to achieve for a while. I think it'll have a very positive effect on the bond rating for the City of Westland, and with the way that we presented it to you, I think that it's, it's very doable, and I think it's something we should, we should try to achieve. So, I did include a legal opinion from the city attorney on how we would go about adopting a three-year budget, so I look forward to, to having that discussion with you. I also included a six-year capital improvement plan, that's up from five years as part of one of our requirements for the redevelopment-ready cities. I also put a resolution for, in front of you for consideration at the April 18th meeting. This would be to allocate the first tranche of the American Recovery Act dollars that Westland received, almost $13 million. I do think it's important that we allocate this money soon with the second tranche coming in May, and there's been a push at the national level to, by some, to hold back the second tranche if you haven't allocated the first. The resolution takes into consideration the things that we discussed at the recent ARPA Strategy Meeting, and some of the things that I put before you in my State of the City, and going back to some of the equipment purchases that we saw during the strategic planning sessions we did last summer. For the residents, copies of my proposed budgets, my letter to the city council outlining the major high points, projects, and departmental changes, and the ARP solution are all available on the website. If those did not come up live today, they, they should be up by tomorrow at the latest. And our first study session with city council will be this Saturday, so we look forward to, to working with you on that. I wanted to thank Vic, but I think he stepped out for, filling in for DTE tonight. I think their plan was originally, was, was to be here tonight and present that themselves, but at, at our meeting today, they asked us if we could share that information. So, in my time in Westland, this is the most comprehensive tree trimming strategy that I've seen them put before, so I think we're gonna see a lot of, a lot of trees being trimmed, and unfortunately, we may not like how some of them get trimmed, but we'll definitely work with them. By having Vic and Ramsey working hand-in-hand with them, we'll try to, to do that in a way that, that's, that's effective, but not obtrusive if we can. Council, we had two really successful events this weekend. Wayne County had their annual household hazardous waste event this Saturday, which was hosted at the Westland Shopping Center, and we had, over 1,800 cars were processed in this event, and the line started about 7:30 in the morning, and everybody that was in line by, I believe it was 2 o'clock, got serviced, and it was, it was a big, big event. And I know that we hadn't had one for about two years, so there was a lot of pent-up demand. I was super impressed by how many people held on to that stuff. The easy thing would have been just to throw it in the trash and say, I'm not waiting, but people hung on to that stuff. The county's working on a second event in the fall. I think they're gonna look at maybe Wayne County Community College or School Craft, so I think there will be another event in this area in the fall. The Neighborhood Services hosted the annual dog vaccination event at the Wayne Ford Civic League Saturday, and over 250 dogs were vaccinated. This is an annual partnership with Michigan Humane Society. Their new name, we learned, is Michigan Humane, so if you saw that, it wasn't a typo. I also wanted to thank Clerk Richard LeBlanc and his staff, they were on hand, and they processed 156 dog licenses that day. So, we appreciate the extra effort, and also, we wanna thank Westland Car Care for being the title sponsor, and Vic Barra and the Wayne Ford Civic League stepped up, and they covered all the cost for 34 Western, Westland veterans. So, that was pretty, pretty neat, too. And then, the last thing is, I had a chance today to attend the ceremony to represent City of Westland at Detroit Metro Airport today for the official dedication of the Warren C. Evans Terminal at the, at the old North Terminal, and it was, it was a much, it was a great event that was very deserving. So, after Mr. Evans' 51 years of dedication to the county, he certainly deserved the recognition, and he had a big turnout. It's not very often you see the county executive, I still call him Sheriff from his sheriff days, it's not very often you see him get, get emotional, but it was, it was an emotional event, so we're, I was proud to be there in behalf of the City of Westland. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything from the attorney's office today?
I just wanted to point out that Vic Barra is still in the audience, Mr. Mayor, but he had to take his tie off, because he was, and his suit coat off, because I think he was lacking oxygen from the tie, so that's why you didn't see him back there. Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. We'll begin council comments this evening with Councilwoman Andrea Rukowski.
Thank you, Council President. As the mayor remarked, we are starting our budget sessions, and I would invite those at home, or those who like to attend our meetings, to attend the study session, that'll be this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Westland has a new nonprofit/volunteer organization that's starting their kickoff. It's called the Westland Volunteer Corps, and you can find them on Facebook, and they also have a website, that is W-V-C-O-R-P-S dot org. And they're gonna be kicking off their very first event as an organization on May 14th, and they are going to be doing a spring cleanup for homebound, low-income seniors that live alone, who are physically or financially unable to do the work themselves. And if you fit this criteria as someone who needs assistance, you can reach out to Barb Markham at 734-467-3259, and she'll add you to the list. But if you're on the other side, and you're able-bodied, and you wanna come out and enjoy some camaraderie with your fellow Westlanders, on May 14th, you need to come out and roll up your sleeves, and put on your boots, and grab your gardening shears, and join in and help. And what's really great about this organization, it really falls in line with our Compassionate City Initiative, and I think there's gonna be wonderful things to come from this group. So, I'm looking forward to volunteering, and I encourage you to do so as well. I'm very happy and thankful that the administration brought forth the resolution, that the great for the Great Lakes Water Authority, you know, while water is a human right, it is not appropriate to be putting municipal bills into the finances of other communities. And so, it's very advantageous at this point for the state to come in. You know, we just heard from Representative Coleman about all of the funding that's coming to our state from the federal level, and it would be the right time for the state to, to make them whole and make us whole, and hopefully, we'll see some action take place there. And that is all I have. So, good evening, and we'll see you two weeks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Godbout.
Thanks. I just wanted to piggyback off the mayor's comments on the household hazardous recycling event. You know, he, I didn't have the, the count of 1,800, but the line wrapped all the way around from Central City Parkway around, all the way down Warren, and three-quarters of the way down the mall side on Wayne Road. But, you know, people were very patient, the process was very smooth and orderly, and it was, it was a huge success. So, hopefully, they, they not only schedule another one in the nearby area, but we can get another one scheduled here in Westland, because I've been to a couple of the other events, and they're, I know it's been two years, but Westland's event is always one of the top ones as far as participation and people showing up for it. So, hopefully, we can convince the county to come back and do it again in, in the city in the fall. That's all I have this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Hirsberg.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to take a moment to thank the subcommittee that met on the policies and procedures. There were some pretty good updates in there, and it was supported unanimously, I think, with no changes. So, thanks for taking the time to meet and clean up a lot of the verbiage that was in there. It was also mentioned that our budget meeting's coming up this Saturday. That is open to the public. That'll be in the ballroom here at City Hall at 10:00 a.m., and if you wanna sit down and talk about, or listen to some of the priorities that we're gonna be talking about for the upcoming year, you're welcome to attend. And then, I'll just thank the council president for starting the meeting with that moment of silence for Judy McKinney. She, she was at these meetings for 30 years. She was one of the first people I met when I first started coming to council meetings, and, you know, even knocking doors, campaign after campaign, I talked to people, they opened the door, they say, oh, council, is Judy McKinney still going to those meetings? So, she was well-known around town. Council was her passion, and my condolences to the family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McDermott.
Well, thank you, Council President, and good evening, everybody. I'll be sort of brief tonight, as brief as I'm allowed to be. Thank you, first off, to the subcommittee that met on the council policies and procedures. Thank you for the work you did, but also, thank you for not putting a provision in there that limits me to about two minutes of speaking. I know you probably could have done that, and it would have been well-deserved. But, no, seriously, to Councilwoman Rukowski, Councilwoman Sampe, and Council President Pro Tem Landau, thank you for the work that you put in that through several meetings. Really appreciate that. As both of my colleagues have mentioned, we have the budget study session coming up this week. I think with the new triennial budget, one of the things that I think we all wanna make sure of is that every council member who gets elected has a say and a voice in that budget year over year, so it's, it's gonna be something new to debate and go over, and I'm looking forward to that, and I hope you join us this Saturday for our first of two budget study sessions. Coming up this month, on the 22nd of April, it is Earth Day, and so, I think that this is a great opportunity, especially with the community grant program that we have going on, and the budget coming up, to debate as a community, what we, and the ARPA money that we have to spend as well, to really debate as a community and have a good conversation on what we can do for Earth Day and beyond to really live to our mission green principles. We've done, you know, quite a bit already in terms of bringing back our recycling program, renewing and redoing our recycling center, and I think there's, you know, more that we can do, and have that conversation in line with the budget, and in line with the community grant program that we've got going on in the ARPA funding. So, excited to have that conversation regarding Earth Day and what we can do for our climate, and to protect us against climate change here going forward in the future. I wanted to thank Vic and everybody at the Civic League, the Clerk's Office, and the administration, everybody who was involved in this Saturday's vaccination event. It was a huge success. I was not able to attend, but I drove by as it was going on and saw some of the pictures online. I saw Councilwoman Sampe, Councilman Landau were there. So, thank you to the Civic League and Vic for opening it up again, for us to do the dog vaccination event, and thank you to everybody in the administration who really made it a success. This is an event that year after year, we get a pretty big crowd for, so it's nice to, that we're able to do that for pet owners and pets here in Westland. And then, just wanted to thank Representative Coleman for his updates tonight. We had quite a bit, so appreciate those updates and all that you're doing for us in Lansing. You know, again, I'll echo the sentiments in terms of Highland Park. Water is a basic human right, and we know that we cannot live without water, and everybody deserves it. But again, we can't go stick on our bills and other people's mailboxes, and the state with this one-time pot of money from the bipartisan infrastructure plan and the American Rescue Plan dollars has to make Highland Park, and has to make communities like us who have been footing the bill for the last 10 years, whole. And it'd be nice to see if there's something that's done for water consumers, all of us as residents and businesses, to help make us whole in terms of not having to continue to foot the bill for Highland Park. And then, the last thing that I will say is, you know, just rest in peace to Judy McKinney. She was a friend to many of us. She was more than just a guest at our meetings, she was someone who came here all the time and really voiced her opinion and her concern about the community. And, you know, Judy may not have agreed with everything we do, and we may not have always agreed with Judy, but she always brought passion and spirit and a, and a well-reasoned opinion here to the council meetings, and, you know, it's gonna be less lively around here, and we're certainly gonna miss having Judy here at our council meetings. And my thoughts go out to all of our friends like May, Ray, you know, those of us on council who, and those in the audience who consider Judy a friend, and also to her family as well. So, my thoughts, my prayers are with Judy McKinney and her family. And with that, I bid you all a wonderful evening, and we'll see you next time, or see you Saturday at the budget study session. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sampe.
All right, well, thank you, Council President. Welcome to April, which I know was mentioned, Ray mentioned it, is Autism Awareness Month. It's a little bit special to me because I have a sibling that has autism, so I brought forth a resolution, it's been passed, and I really wanna thank the administration for supporting me in this mission. As you leave today, you might see blue lights, so we're gonna light up the City Hall blue for the month, which I'm very proud about. I also gave out pins for those that are wearing them on a dais, thank you for supporting me in this mission. Again, it is very, kind of emotional, just because of all the struggles and everything that my family went through. I definitely would encourage residents to change their light bulb blue. Home Depot has a kiosk when you first walk in, so if you are supporting the mission, please change your light bulb blue, I would really appreciate that. We recently taped a show about autism awareness, so I wanted to thank Westland Police Officer Kevin Yute, Westland residents Debbie and Brian Hunt, and Don and Edward Nicholson. I had them as my guests on the show, and we really debunked a lot of questions and different things that you may hear about autism, so the show's gonna come out on cable, but also on YouTube, it's gonna be the Autism Awareness Show. So, I hosted it, we asked...
It's going to be the Autism Awareness Show. So I hosted it. We asked a lot of questions, some personal, some just, you know, general about autism. So feel free to, to watch that show. And, you know, if you're interested in learning more, you can, you can always contact me. So thank you, Craig, and Craig, and Kevin, everyone at WLND. You guys are amazing. You're so patient. We had a lot of guests in, in that one room, and especially my brother who asked for coffee at least 75 times. And they kept him very patient and they were very kind and entertained him. So thank you so much again for, for hosting us and allowing us to do that. I'm going to jump into just one thing as well. We had a Rock and Roll Committee meeting. What? Walk and Roll. Why do I say Rock and Roll? It's, I think that's a better name, but that's okay. So I just want to thank the administration and Mo for, for allowing us to, to have that. It was really great with the planning committee, too. I think that was maybe one of the first time it's been done. So it's great to kind of learn the progress, just ask some questions. I'm really excited to see we'll have more active cyclists here in the city. I think my only major concern was the lighting in the low-lit areas. So I brought up an idea of having a sun-powered glow-in-the-dark path. So it would actually absorb sun rays during the day and then light up at dark. And it's more cost-effective and environmental-friendly. So that's something I, I hope that, you know, maybe the administration considers as a possible, possible option. I also wanted to thank Vic for hosting at Wayne Ford Civic League. The dog vaccination vent, event was great. I was out there with Councilwoman Londo. And I think there was like over 250 dogs. So large, big, they had a, I want to say sassy dogs, but a little area for, for more active dogs. And it was really, it was nice to see the dog owners out there. Thank you so much for offering, you know, the no-cost vaccinations, Vic, to our veterans. I know they appreciate it. I talked to a lot of residents and I think it was really great that we can do this year after year. It's just really important. So thank you, Neighborhood Services, Clerk LeBlanc, your team was amazing. I talked to them, and Westland Car Care for that sponsorship. I also wanted to thank my team of Councilwoman Londo, Councilwoman Rakowski. We did work many hours on cleaning up that document. Lot of revisions back and forth, a lot of changes. We read through it and it was passed unanimously. So thank you, everyone, for passing that. We did have a study session and very little changes. So just a reminder about the budget session. I know it has been mentioned. I hope to see everyone out there on Saturday. It's going to be a long day, but very informative. And although I didn't know Judy McKinney very well, we have met, obviously. I want to send my deepest condolences to her family, all those that knew her as well, too. May she rest in peace. So and for those that are celebrating Easter, I wish you a blessed Easter. We won't be seeing you before then. Everyone have a very safe holiday and be safe and kind with each other and see you very soon.
Protem Londo.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks, President Hart, and thank you for the moment of silence for Judy McKinney. Everybody had a lot of great things to share. She's someone I've, I've only known for, since I've been involved politically in the city for probably seven or eight years. But I remember watching her on TV with my mom, you know, years ago, watching her on the meetings. And we looked forward to it because she kept people, you know, held people accountable. But one thing she was always great was she'd pick up the phone and call me. She was always very respectful, very respectful on the phone with me whenever she had issues. And I appreciated that from her. And so my deepest condolences go out to her family, friends, and everyone. The Policies and Procedures Committee, thank you to my colleagues, Councilwoman Sampey and Councilwoman Rakowski. A lot of work really did go into the document. I'm going to touch on a few of the high-level changes. But hours upon hours of time went into it between meeting personally and then Councilwoman Sampey was kind enough to kind of make the changes in the document. And then Councilwoman Rakowski took some, made some changes, did some formatting. I'm sure they are tired of hearing from me. So I'm glad that the document is done. I'm sure the council president's happy that we've, we did it in a pretty expedient fashion. That brings up the neighborhood grants. We did have a deadline on April 1st. I have all of the grants that were submitted by the deadline. So thank you to Councilwoman Godbout and Councilwoman Rakowski for helping me with leading net charge and the Clerk's Office for cataloging those for us. They did a great job with getting all the information, taking all the information in and sending it over to me on a weekly basis. So we'll have another discussion. We'll go through all these and we'll hope to have an announcement here in the near future at a council meeting rewarding these grant applicants. Oh, also, thank you, thank you, thank you to the administration and WLND in particular. They did an incredible job getting the word out about this. Way far exceeded my expectations as far as how much it got out there. I thought they'd share it here and there. It was everywhere. It was on the homepage of the city website. It was on WLND every day for, or every week for this week in Westland. It was in the water bills. They shared it on social media. So we did a council connect program where we, they spent probably an hour setting up and we only did maybe a two-minute video. So a lot of work went in with them. So I really, really, really appreciate WLND for pushing that out there. We talked about the budget and ARPA. We, council hasn't received their packets. You should have, have those in the back, in the mailroom. And then, you know, I did say it at the last meeting, but there really are some, some great changes coming to the community. I've seen a few of the things and I can't wait to hear some of these announcements. So stay tuned for those. Okay, just briefly on the policies and procedures. For those, you can see the, the entire document in the council, or on the city website. However, the changes aren't on there. So I'll just highlight just a few of those. We added a preamble at the beginning that acts much like a mission statement that states that we as local leaders, how we should conduct ourselves while representing the residents at public meetings. We all swear to uphold these policies and procedures when we're, when we're sworn in. But we just added this in the beginning. We also added a section under presiding officers that allow the council president and the protem acting as council leadership to attend various administrative-level meetings on behalf of the entire council. That's been going on for years, but, you know, previous council, there was a question on that. So we added that language in there to, to cover that basis. Added something in the travel policy, just to, just to, to where the form is, so we can have a, have the form that we need to fill out on the secure portal on our website. On the agenda itself, this is a big change. We moved payment of vouchers, which is normally the last item on the agenda. Moved that up just past consent calendar, as that typically is type of a routine type of item. However, at any time, if there's a lot of questions on the vouchers and they need more time, we can always make a motion to move that back down. Roberts Rules of Order. Our meetings are conducted via Roberts Rules of Order. We added a parliamentarian of record. City Attorney's Office is now our parliamentarian, parliamentarian of record. So thank you to City Attorney's Office. Public comment policy. We, we added in there that, you know, there was always a way to see the document online. We've added verbiage in there now that it is available online to see this document. And you can also at any time, at least during business hours, pick up the document from the city clerk's office. We also added, and this is a big change, that signs, placards, banners, or similar items may not be permitted at any time in the council chambers. Although this rule does not apply to, you know, if someone's coming forward with a, a display board pertaining to an agenda item. So anyone's coming in, if they're doing business in our city and they have, you know, a large sign for a map, they can bring that. Last two things. Under motions, typically a motion and support is, is made and then we immediately get into deliberations. We now have language in there that states after a motion and support, we give the director or the mayor, or whoever the person submitting the item is an opportunity to expound on the item. They may not. They may say, "I have nothing." But at least gives them an opportunity to bring up, you know, give, give a little bit of information on the item. And then recesses. Under recesses, we, we used to have it in there where the council president can call for a recess for up to 10 minutes. We took out the time limit and just said for an indefinite amount of time. And then during the recess, all council members are to vacate the council president, council chambers until the president or protem indicates that the meeting should be reconvened. The mayor's office is also obliged and said that they'll also leave the room as well. What that does is just, it allows us to contain order of the room. We're not looking to silence anybody, but if any one of us or anybody in the public's being unruly, it gives us an opportunity to take a recess for an indefinite amount of time. And that's pretty much it. So if anybody wants to see the document, you can see it on cityofwestland.com under the city clerk's or city council page. And that's it. Have a good night.
Thank you, Protem. I'd like to begin by thanking Councilwoman Sampey for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance and also providing us these cool little pins as we support you for Autism Awareness Month and the entire movement behind it. So keep us educated. I know you are. Can't wait to watch your spot. Wanted to thank the Wayne Ford Civic League, like everyone else has. You know, it's, it's really cool to do this pet vaccination program. And quite frankly, a lot of people don't think about it. They don't get it done. So they've made an opportunity where it's so convenient to not do it, it's ridiculous, right? So just come on out and the cost is pretty, pretty cheap. I take my dogs to one of the local veterinarians and get them care. And I'll, I'll tell you, their prices are considerably higher than what they would have been this weekend. So I thank you for that. That's a huge value add to our residents. I thank the sponsors. But one really cool added thing this year was the Clerk's Office. And I got to thank you for being there to actually perform the pet licensing. It was a true one-stop shop. So thank you to all them for being out there that really, I didn't think you could make the event better, and they did. So thank you to the Clerk's Office. I thank them personally. I wanted to thank you. So thank you so much. And lastly, I want to thank the Wayne Ford Civic League one extra time for taking care of all those vets out there. It means an awful lot to me. Wanted to, again, reiterate what my colleague said about Judy McKinney. She was something else, you know. You know, Judy, if she had an opinion, don't worry, she's going to tell it to you. She'll let you know, good, bad, indifferent, and, you know, and that's, I, I, I actually admire that about her. I didn't always agree with her, but she said what she had to say. And she, just like the, the protem, she's called me and she was always very respectful on the phone. She'd be emotionally charged and driven and connected to her, her item that she wanted to talk, to talk to you about. But she didn't talk down at you. She was honest and fair. And I, I really, I wish the best for her family. I, I hope Judy's on the other side. And I know she's on the other side and giving St. Peter the same kind of hell that she gave us. So for the policies and procedures, do want to thank the committee for coming together. It did need a lot of cleanup. I mean, it was formatting, it had lost some of its formatting professionalism over the years. So they, they really just took it and cleaned it all up. And now it's, it's what, it's an even better example of a survivable document. It's easier to edit in the future as, as, you know, conditions and the environments change in our life. You know, things change consistently and that is a living document. But being able to really bring it together and smarten it up, I appreciate it. And like the protem said, some of the, the only big changes that we made really are, are changes that kind of allow us to maintain professional decorum in this chamber. We all recognize this is a business meeting of the people. This isn't the Maury Povich Show. And every now and then, a few years ago, it turned into that. So now we've created a professional mechanism so that we just calm everything down and then put things back in order the way it should be. That's the way it's supposed to be. And I think that's what everybody here expects. Not only the people in this dais, the administration, but all of you and everybody at home. I've gotten a lot of phone calls over the years from a lot of you at home asking why can't we do something about it? Well, we've done something about it. This is the process and we've checked it. So hopefully we never have to use it, but it's there for us so that we can maintain order. And not only for me, but for anybody who has to sit in this seat coming forward. It's a tough job. So you have to have a tool to maintain order for everybody. So thank you for all your hard work on that. The neighborhood grants, thank you for the committee that worked on that. So all of the stuff that came in, I saw. I do have the applications here. So I'm looking forward to get to that next stage where we can get those awards out to them and recognize them. So, and then I'm looking forward to seeing the projects out there at the community. If you're one of the people that got a grant, I expect me to come by and see how you're doing. And if you're holding a party, I might show up, too. So other than that, I wanted to thank everybody for their time and wish you all a very happy Easter weekend coming up. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?